He might make the work session. He'll be here in time for the council meeting. We'll go ahead and call the work session order. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Should be a fairly short work session. Nothing major on the agenda. Counsel, start off with committee updates.
Um.
Martin, you got anything?
Yeah, well, yeah, I met with a couple of committees. I met with the rec. We all were at the rec. At the rec. Meeting, and I think it was a good meeting. I think we're trying to move forward to some things that were already instrumented as far as put in place, as far as resolutions are concerned, and we'll take those next steps, and that'll be a positive step as far as the rec. Is concerned with our kids. The environmental board did not have a quorum, so nothing to talk about there.
All right. Thank you.
I have nothing to report.
All right. Well, likewise, I was in the rec. Board with Councilman Martin, and Councilman Morell was there as well. They talked about, you know, the five-year plan, major projects, which included the Volanna Park kind of redesign, if you will, so that looking to get that cranked back up. That was all that came out of that meeting. Went to my first historical committee meeting. We had Maria Batwell with the City of Foley, who was kind of led their charge in becoming a historical commission, kind of the ins and outs and the do's and don'ts about forming that going from a committee to a commission. So no action was taken. We just kind of gathered some information, and that was all we did. So with that, that concludes committee updates. We'll go into department head update. Before we do, Mayor Sullivan, you want to give us an update on the Christmas parade?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. So we have come up with a modification plan for the Christmas parade, which we knew could possibly be an option as we move forward. And as we're seeing a rise in COVID cases here in Baldwin County, we have talked about the Christmas parade, and we are going to actually do a kind of a reverse parade. So the parade, as everybody knows, is on Friday, December 4. And so what we will do is starting on at Magnolia and Section, and it will go through Morphe and Section. We will have the parade. It's going to be a drive-through parade. So the floats will be statically displayed in the parking spaces along those roads, and we will actually have the beginning of the parade, I mean, we'll have some probably a light tunnel. That's what we're hoping for. Cars will drive through. There'll be some some activity at the intersection there, possibly with Rudolph and Frosty, maybe some snow, maybe some lights. And then you'll keep going, drive out at Morphe and Morphe and Section, and Santa will be there to, you know, say hello as you exit the parade or exit the event. So we're asking people to have their family, bring their family, get in the car, put on your pajamas, call it a pajama parade and parade through Fairhope.
Has there been any planning as far as lighting the cars up, what direction they obviously, they're going to start at Magnolia?
Correct.
And they'll have to go north, but.
Correct. They will come in on Section, and we know that probably in the beginning, we haven't decided on the start time, 6:30 or 7 o'clock, but we know in the beginning there'll probably be a backup. We've worked with the police department on that, talked this morning. So we know there'll be a backup, but we're thinking the traffic will probably be intermittent at that point, you know, after we get that initial phase through. And again, if we're going to continually flow traffic down Section, and then you will turn on Morphe, whichever direction you want to go or go straight.
So, yeah, for for those listening, the Christmas parade is now a drive-through event. You will enter from Section Street, you will cross Magnolia into the parade zone, and the parade zone will be all the way to Morphe. So if you're looking to do a drive-through with your kid in their pajamas and see Santa Claus, you'll need to circle around somewhere, probably the elementary school, and come up Section Street from that direction.
Right. And we'll be putting out more information again on social media and putting out press releases so people will, you know, have the route and they'll know more about it. But again, we just made those modifications, you know, over the weekend and this morning, so we're working through the details of it. But I think this is a great alternative for us since we didn't want to encourage gathering at the parade, even though the parade route is big enough for people to social distance. But as we found during tree lighting, you can't rely on adults to do the things that they're supposed to do. So we provide a safe event, but we have to rely on the people who are coming to that event to do the things that they're supposed to do. And if they don't, then it creates a problem for all of us. So this is a way we can, you know, still have the parade. We encourage the people who want to participate to still participate, but then the people who will come to the parade as spectators will drive through.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving ahead, department heads, I won't call you by name. If you have something to bring before the council during this work session, please come forward.
Just two updates quickly. It's starting to feel like disaster debris is in our rearview mirror, but we are announcing the final push, and we did get communications out, take it to the curb. We're asking folks to take this weekend, the long weekend of Thanksgiving, and finish up getting their vegetative and C and D debris out to the curb. Contractor will be back in. They're going to ride the streets on Monday, the first Monday following Thanksgiving, and then the trucks are going to hit the street that Tuesday, and their goal is by December 7, final pass is complete citywide. And understand, they will they will remobilize and hit all zones in the city simultaneously. So we're asking folks to to get it out there. And here's the big thing. We still do regular weekly curbside trash service, but but understand if somebody has the ability to move a whole tree or a whole stump to the road after the 7th, we don't have the ability to pick it up. Our trucks are not designed to pick up the very, very large items. So that trash will have to meet the dimensional requirements that we we put out there, that, you know, logs are cut up in, you know, no greater than six-foot lengths and are stacked and piled where we can manage it. So please encourage your neighbors and everybody to get that because we do want to get that wrapped up and start getting that project closed out because we don't can't get our reimbursement fully until we have the project closed and start that process. The other thing is that was delayed also by the hurricanes was our annual paving program. They started today. So they're out resurfacing streets, and and I know we have some sensitivity around the holidays. We're going to work with contractor and make sure that we don't don't disrupt anybody during the holidays on that. But we're just glad to get that that program going and getting those roads resurfaced here in the city. And that's really all I have.
Richard, I know the cleanup of Fly Creek was on the list. Do you know where the contractor stands on that?
That's going to probably be the one of the last things he he does. That's a that's a different branch of their their division. So that that crew has not been dispatched here, but we know we have not forgotten about that. The the big holdup is trying to make sure in the case NRCS is going to be the the reimbursor of that cost instead of FEMA, and we're still waiting to get confirmation of the of those DSRs or whatever they call it, that ensures that we're covered there. They they were here last week. I know Sean loaned them a couple of kayaks, and the folks from NRCS did kayak up the creek to lay the eyes on them. So I know they're working on it. But that, no, that has not been forgotten, but that may be one of the last things that get done. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Monday. So on number 25 on tonight's council agenda is an item for an app for the City of Fairhope. And we have not really had an opportunity to talk about this, and it is on the agenda tonight. So I kind of wanted to give you a quick presentation of what we're talking about. We have the opportunity to implement and design an app for the City of Fairhope through CARES Act funding. This is 100% funded by CARES Act. Obviously, the timer is on for us with that. It has to be undertaken and implemented by December the 30. So that is why you see it tonight. This app is so this app is by OCV LLC. They are based in Opelika. They are, I mean, an Alabama company, which is pretty great. They've been in business for 10 years. And I've had an opportunity to meet with them now and have a lot of of business with them in the last two weeks. They are very efficient. They have undertaken apps for public safety organizations within the state of Alabama, but also across the country, also fire departments. And their mobile apps are very easy to use. Locally, the Baldwin County Sheriff's Department uses them or have has used them for the implementation of their app. The reason why we would, obviously, I am not great at PowerPoints. Sorry, guys. So the reason why we would do this is because more than 81% of the people in the U.S. use smartphones as their main means of communication. To break it down even more, 94% of people ages 13 to 49 use this as their primary means of communication. And even further, and I think this is is very important as well, a smartphone is the only internet access for many low-income groups. So use of mobile apps, 90% of this content is viewed in an app versus 10% that you would see in internet searches. If you have heard us talk here and you've also seen it, we have a little bit of a challenge with communications here in the city, and I don't think that it's it's really unique to us. I think that is something that a lot of cities, a lot of counties, a lot of governments have right now, is how in the world do you get to people in general, especially in an internet world. So this mobile app that you see the proposal for tonight has significant features. You will see on your screens as it pops up, this is kind of a mock-up of what our mobile app would look like. You see it's very clean. It's pretty easy to read. For our demographics, all of them, it is makes it very accessible. It includes push notifications and alerts. It lets us push out news and press releases. It gives us a calendar. It allows us to really push people toward all of our resources on our our website. Gives us the contacts. This is pretty awesome. So I know a lot of people have issues contacting us. This gives you the option to click on a name, and you can call that person directly, or you can email the person. In our world, that makes it a lot simpler. Custom forms, appointment reminders, maps, surveys and quizzes, checklists. One thing that I do really appreciate about it is that it does give you the option to have a social media digest. You know, during the hurricane, we had significant challenges getting information to people. We did utilize Facebook to the tune of about 164 posts in a 10-day period. Everybody doesn't use Facebook, but what this does is it allows us to take that information we're pushing onto Facebook and put it in a digest in this app. It'll allow us to use that for push notifications. So if you're someone who, you know, is sitting at home and you want to know what's going on, it's going to give you that awesome pop-up. It also lets us integrate with the National Weather Service. So whenever it comes to severe weather, that gives us that option to really get that information to people. It will allow us to integrate with Everbridge, but we do believe that this may give us the option of kind of doing away with Everbridge. It is a little bit of a redundancy. This is a little more efficient, we think, across the board. We will have access on our end in communications to the app control panel. It gives us this really easy way to push notifications to people, to schedule notifications, to integrate that social media, and also to look at the metrics. That's really important for us whenever we're trying to figure out how to communicate to people, what it takes to get to people. It gives us that live updates as well. Really important is the multi-user administration for that. So not only would it be my department, but we would also be able to include IT and the mayor and whomever else needs to be involved in that really integral part of getting information to people. The price tag, oh, let's get to the marketing packet package real quick. They do all of this for us. They do it all. The with the price tag that you see in your packet tonight includes three years of them doing this all for us. The they implement it. We're going to do it in five weeks, and then they maintain it. So you're not calling me when you're having an issue with your your app because I'm not going to be able to answer that question. We have extra help with that. And that's incredibly important to us. Next steps, and this is really important, that price tag on that three-year contract is $31,545. Again, let me reiterate that this is CARES Act funding, which is 100% funded. This is not coming out of a city budget. The next steps that are involved with that is, and you don't have this up there, but it's kind of important to see. They normally say that this is a six-to-eight-week integration and implementation. Because we have to have it done by December the 30th, we don't have six to eight weeks. So this is going to be my department's big job in December if we can get this approved tonight. The next steps will be to finalize the list of features and menu design. I definitely expect that you will all have an opportunity to take a look at what that looks like. We have, you know, obviously, the purchase order, app development. Lucky for us, we already have Google and Apple developer accounts, so that is something that normally takes a good bit of time. Because we have those already secured, that's one step we don't have to really worry about. But this company is is very solid. They have got it down to a science. They are just kind of kind of dipping their toes in the municipal world. We would a little bit be a test case for them, but as I have gone through each one of their apps, I do believe that it is a very important step for us to take. We have a really great opportunity because the way COVID worked and getting information to people during COVID was very difficult, just like it was during the hurricane, getting making sure people have what they need without having to leave their home, without having to to be around other people or, you know, worry about their health. That that's would be very valuable for us going forward. So I can answer, hopefully, any question you may have.
I think it's great. I read it. I was reading it beforehand, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to expand and come into the times as far as how we communicate. The really, I put asterisk here, the part that I really love about it is that we can actually identify if the thing is working or not, and it gives us an idea if we want to continue or on down that road or not. But I really like that part about it.
And to speak to that specifically, we did have an option of a one-year or a three-year plan. In my opinion professionally, I think that for us to see a really good return on investment, we have to look at that three-year time. We can't look at just a year. It takes a little bit for things to get off the ground. We have to see those three years to really check on those trends and make sure that we're going the way we need to. Sorry.
And then we'll have to have some kind of service agreement beyond that.
We would, but I do think that that three-year would give us an opportunity to, number one, make sure that it works for us as a community, make sure that it works for what we want it to. I feel pretty confident that it will, but that three years gives us an opportunity to decide whether it does or not.
The money is actually kind of low as far as performing or creating an app. I don't know if anybody's ever tried to create an app. It runs up, one app could run you up in the $40,000, $50,000.
And that's not with maintenance, right?
And I know, right. So when I did the numbers, it was like we were paying 10-5 a year, you know. I don't know. Is that a is that a government? Is that government money? Or like, is that a government discount? But that's a good deal, I think, you know.
Are there any hidden, when I say hidden costs, as far as?
Yeah.
When we come back next year and say, well, we got to come up for this particular app, we have to have a maintenance fee.
Great question.
Or somebody's got to look at the information for X number of dollars. I mean, basically, this is it and done deal.
This is it.
For three years.
Absolutely. And it gives us an option also because we have such a quick turnaround, and there is a lot of work involved with that quick turnaround. It does give us an option to add a little bit to it if it if it looks like our features are not the features that we want to have there. Gives us a chance to add that. We can, in the future, look at adding a tourism module to that if we choose, adding recreation modules to that if we choose. That is not something that we're ready to do right now, obviously. We want to see if it works. It might not work. We want to see if it works.
That would be extra to add those things? Are we?
Possibly, but possibly not. Because, again, the most important thing right now is getting people the information that we have, getting people to our councilmen and our mayor and our city staff so that they get their questions answered. They're frustrated just like we are. They aren't getting what they want to see. We can't get it to them. Hopefully, this will help us bridge that gap.
That's all you got?
Anything?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Schor is nervous.
Just want to give a real quick update on the gas replacement project starting downtown. We're going to start on it Monday, the 30. They're going to have two crews, the contractors have two crews, and we'll have one crew working with them. They're going to work five days a week, 10 hours a day, Monday through Friday. We're going to start on Pier Street from South Mobile up to Church, and there's approximately 40, 45 services on that street. It's going to have to be replaced. Then the other crew is going to start on Curtman at South Church Street, working this section, and there's about 30, 35 approximately services there with including the cul-de-sacs. From that point on, we're going to move probably to Pecan and then figure out what street's the next best street to do. We're doing them two first because that's on the pavement list first. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Those gas replacements, that's the the main end service to each pier?
Just the services.
Okay.
Just getting rid of the old steel services.
I was going to ask you, does this got to do with the steel pipe we're having to replace over a period of time? This is part of that?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Good.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We discussed this this morning in our director's meeting with the mayor, but I need the parents to be on notice. You know, we got a lot of golf carts around town now. We're having an issue with carts entering the golf course property at night, riding across greens and across the course in general. And I spoke with Shane Nolte about this Friday. He did have some officers patrol the course Friday night. They did catch some teenagers on a golf cart, and their parents were called. So I just need the public to be on notice. We cannot be driving golf carts out on that property at night. We have cart paths that are damaged from the storm that you would not be able to see at night. Also, there's a lot of, you know, other hazardous things that kids could get injured out there, and I certainly don't want that on our property. So I just needed to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat. Next. Go once, twice. All right. We'll move on to the council agenda. Item five, declare the real property of Pecan. Who would that be? Hmm?
Project.
The council president.
Council president?
I can speak to it, too.
Okay.
So. So we, the K O E R, which is down, that's the one that's, no, that's not one of them. I'm not going to address that one. Never mind. That wasn't what I thought it was.
Okay.
I can address it if you want to know about it right now.
They want to lease that.
That's what it was.
Yes, that's one of the.
That's what it is.
Yeah, so. Bodyguard organization's barn got back.
It's K O E R.
It got blasted, and they need some help.
Yeah.
In getting the barn repaired. So they asked us if we could lease, if they could lease some of the space over at the Pecan Avenue building in order to store their floats. And we agreed to that, and they're going to pay a little bit more money than the movie studio did when they leased the property to store their equipment there. So that's all it is. And then they go, once their barn's repaired, they're going to move it back to the barn.
Yeah.
It's a short term.
For one year.
Short-term lease, just just long enough to get the barn fixed.
From now until December of next year, I believe. One-year lease.
No, till December of this year.
Oh, December this year. I'm sorry.
It's only a couple of weeks.
Just a one-month lease. Okay. My apologies.
It confused me when it said property not needed for public or municipal purpose. I'm like.
They're talking about the space, not the whole property.
Yeah, that's why we can lease it.
The particular space they're going to be using is not needed.
Right. That's why we can lease it.
All right. Item six, public improvements at Battle's Trace. Accepted for public. Hunter, is that you? Same thing, number seven, Hunter? Pending litigation? That'd be Jack. Number eight, B. Michael Allison, is that you?
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Number 10. That'd be Michael as well?
That's actually Jason, likely.
It's going to be Jason.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, Jason. All this pretty straightforward stuff. 11, is that you, Michael?
Yeah, Michael, let me speak to it, so. This is one of those things that is simple but complicated. And I know that Councilman Boone actually was sitting on the MPO, and we finally fought to get this project funded. Basically, what happened, as you know, we got approved to do this project through the MPO. And and when it got approved, it was going to be administered by by Aldot, which means that that we just have to write them a check for our part. And we started moving forward in that, and they kind of changed their internal policies and said, hey, we're going to let this be a local, an LPA project, a local project administration, which saved us 13.6%, 13.63% project overhead that we'd have to pay Aldot to do that. So it was a good thing for us, plus it allows us to move quickly. And basically, this is what happened. GMC had been designated to the Aldot process to be the engineer of record for this project. And then when it got switched over, this council executed a funding agreement for the principal of for preliminary engineering. They issued a funding agreement for and the monies for the actual construction. But what we failed to do with that change is actually have a resolution authorizing the signature of a contract with GMC. So this is somewhat putting the toothpaste back in the tube, even though the money's been funded, the project's been funded, the project has been approved, the engineering has been approved. There's just not been a resolution designating GMC as the engineer of record.
The light is up, correct, Richard? The light is up.
No, this this is adding turn lanes on Gafer as it intersects.
Oh, okay. I thought you said traffic signal.
And and upgrading the signals there.
But the signal lights are up.
There is a signal there, but there is no turn lane.
There's no tailing, so it's not complete.
Traffic backs up there.
So we're still working on it?
No, we're just, we're in the engineering design part of it right now.
Okay. All right.
All right?
All right.
And I can address 13 and 14. These are results of Hurricane Sally. And we're asking to reject that we did not get good response, and the prices that we did get responded are outrageous. And we did, we're we're going to repair, we're going to assemble the three new greenhouses ourselves and fix the other ones. Because, just so you know, the price to assemble the greenhouses was twice what we paid for the three greenhouses to be delivered here. And we just, we got to get on with it, and we think we can do a better job there.
Got you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Number 15. What's that? Kim? Anybody have any questions? Straightforward. We won't ask too many. We know Jack will get in here and start asking some more.
Yeah, I did want to mention on that one that that is just for, that is not the FRE. That's correct. Right, Kim? That's not the FRE for the electric meter and gas. So this is just for public works, water.
Number 16, Chronos Timekeeping. Kim?
That's Jeff, right?
Jeff.
It's IT.
Jeff.
Just a renewal.
Fireworks. Jessica?
Yeah, and can I can I also say something about that?
Please do.
Just want to let everybody know that, I mean, obviously, we have New Year's Eve expenses on here because we know that we need to have those expenses approved prior to doing anything. That does not mean that we are moving forward with New Year's Eve. We are still assessing that event and determine, trying to determine if we can do that with social distancing. So it's not saying that we're moving forward with New Year's Eve. It's saying that we have to have those expenses approved so we can move forward if the opportunity allows us to.
Thank you, Mayor. 20 roof repairs to the USA Building. Mr. Allison?
And 20, 21, 22 are all same type. These are roofs that were damaged during Sally, and we went through the procurement process that meets FEMA guidelines. And between our insurance company and our FEMA PA, we're going to be able to get those re-roofed, and we're asking you to approve those three competitively bid projects.
Did you have several bidders on these projects, hopefully?
We had more on these, yeah, and I think we got good prices. So I feel that they're not outrageous. So.
All right. 23, some compression system for rescue trucks. Chief? 24, speed monitor. Shane, is that you? 26, flower plantings for next year.
Yes, sir. That's just getting that part of the budget approved. We gotta order flowers.
Richard? You wanna give us a little info on that?
Just looking at our overall operations and, and after meeting with the, discussing this with the mayor, um, this just is an opportunity to, to consolidate our operations and hopefully be more effective, and that's what we're asking y'all to consider.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. 28, one-time supplemental pay increase.